Like well said, exciting. Let's call the meeting to order. Uh, November Black Erman, Steve Noseworth excuse, Daniel Black will be seated. First item consideration of the meeting minutes from May tenth, we don't have any, uh, they're not quite done. So let's move on. I agree. Continuing another business, Alex Ray D B A Alex Ray North L L C. Conceptual twenty twenty-two dash ten map one label three Alex Ray D B A Alex Ray North L L C diner. Out of three, field box five eighty-one, action in the answer zero three two one seven converter basin lot to a restaurant parking. Alexander Alex Ray who owns the common man restaurant at map one eighteen lot two purchase a diner enforcement in Kansas. And would like to relocate the diner to the lot next to the common man restaurant possibly sharing some of the parking with the common man restaurant. The diner would be open for three meals per day, whereas the common man restaurant is only open for dinner. The applicant received site plan approval for a thirty-four unit in back in two thousand and seven, but he never constructed the in. Mister Ray presented the conceptual plan for a diner to the planning board at their planning board meeting. May third, twenty twenty-two, but since then, Mister Ray has tweaked his conceptual substantially. He wants to present his tweet conceptual plan with planning board for their input and advice. Getting a formal application for full site plan review. No updated plans have been submitted today. On us.
So you can grab the chair.
Well, we've talked about the last time we was here, but we had more.
We have the minutes.
We have the minutes.
And this will pack.
And then you have.
Sure. You have the. That meeting. With Walder. I don't.
Hanging in there.
From the meeting over here. My name is Kevin French. Welcome to you guys.
Uh, as you can hopefully see, um, what Alex was looking to do with, but he has a diner, which is twelve by forty-two. And he'd like to put that in the. Southeast corner of the property, um, and then do a roughly twenty by thirty addition onto that. And the, the proposal would be to come have an one, have an entrance off of. Uh, Forest Ridge Drive, which is just beyond. They look the Viner Island that they have there and it's opposite like your driveway that's wrapped in. For the property on the other side of the road, they think it was going to be a.
Excuse me, could you, I'm sorry, but could you tell me where the addition is? I see the diner.
Okay.
This, I skip parking lot.
This, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Where is the additions?
This is the, this is the addition right here. This paved parking lot is what exists now. Okay, which is right, right, that which is right there. That's the existing. Same parking lot.
Oh, okay.
They up for that, they had a, uh.
Right.
Some kind of.
Right, right, right.
Sales off.
Sales off. Okay, so this, yeah, that this section here is the.
That's the addition, yes.
We're not really, you're not really taking away any paved parking with the new addition to the diner.
Oh, we're not. Well, well, that's all we'll, we'll.
We'll be adding some. Yeah.
Is this parking now, even though?
Yes, that's, this is, this.
That's what's there.
Paved packing is.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought.
Steel office, that's why I asked.
What if, yeah, but yeah.
Okay.
I, I just thought that that was going to remain a big parking lot and that's the addition to that. Okay.
Um, so that they would come, one entrance would be off of Forest Ridge Drive and would come through. And they would also be a entrance off of Paul and Row, which is kind of, it's already, there's an apron in there. Presently now, um, the other thing he like wants to do was at the diner, he wanted to have a drive-through service. So there would be two lanes that would go around, around the diner. And one would be for the service window and another would be a, you know, a pass, pass through lane.
So excuse me, but going out onto the Forest Ridge Drive.
Yep.
Is this only an exit or is that also going to be an entrance?
That would only be an exit.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, we, because of. Not that island.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I'm just asking, I just want.
Um, and as shown right now, we have, uh, forty-four, forty-four parking spaces. Uh, and I put in six handicap, which I think is more than we need, but that's what I feel.
So now, so you know.
Yep.
You have the exit. Out on to Forest Island, you have the entrance exit off of Paul Road, and then you have a proposed.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
So there's three. Three, right, well, that one, this is just an exit. So there's two, and two entrances, an exit, and one just an exit.
Right. And it's just a right turn next.
That's right, that's correct, yes. Make it sound clear what, what's it.
Will the signs be combined on the existing?
I mean.
Is, will the signs be, uh, located where the existing sign is for the?
Uh, that's a good question. What, what, the, the sign or the sign, if you have a, you have an existing sign, common man's sign there.
Well, I think the only major sign will be on the roof. You know?
Yeah, because it was proposed in the other drawing, that's why it was.
It'll, it'll be a. A roof mounted. We don't use neon and we don't use, it's a neon, yeah, we don't use neon anymore.
Will you have additional, uh, lighting in the driveway?
Oh, yeah.
How many spaces will be shared between the two restaurants?
What's that?
Well, spaces be shared.
Well, they can if they want.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's not, you have enough space.
And we have more space we aren't using.
Okay. I mean, if my question, you have enough spaces for both restaurants?
Yes, well, so let's answer that question by saying right now at the common man, we don't have any problems anymore. It doesn't get screened and stuff. But, but they can park wherever they want.
I, I have showed a walkway connecting this parking lot. To the, uh, of the, to the common room.
Yeah.
Common Man Restaurant. So these are two separate parcels and two separate businesses, right?
So that's correct, yes.
So this parcel will need to have enough parking. To accommodate whatever you have in here, which I'm assuming by looks that it does. I, I don't know what the requirement is. How many parking spaces do you have to say on it?
At forty-four.
That's forty-four?
Yeah.
And how many seats do you have?
I mean, you know, I'm gonna have to think for a second exactly, um. What's our form of care? It's one for, it's four, one value base for four seats.
Plus one for every ten parking spaces for employees.
Plus one for every ten?
Yeah. You basically take one more, eleven for employees.
Okay. I think.
And then one more for employees.
I mean, I'm asking a question about sharing the parking because of what it says here. Says possibly sharing some of the parking with the common man restaurant.
Is this gonna go open at night, same time comments or?
I'm gonna start with, with, with six thirty to two for a little while and, uh, get our feet wet. But long and, and along going forward, then we'll do it for weekends maybe because that's the biggest hit. Uh, potentially we'll be over all the time.
Well, we need more places to eat around.
Hey, really?
But Alex, this restaurant, he didn't own this land, so the common man restaurant is on a tender loan item for spacking and approval. They already have that.
Right.
It's a separate entity on itself.
I understand.
But you can buy both again, as the, the required. And like Abby said, one time, it doesn't work for restaurants and empty parking place.
Well, that's right, but I mean, if, if the column is open, then, and it's full, then this has to be able to.
Exactly.
Be on its own. So we gotta make sure, so, so you would need to make sure how many seats, how many parking spots, plus the employee wants to make sure, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest concern is that we don't cut double count parking spaces.
It won't, it won't be too many seats and, um, less, but around forty, I think. It's not.
You don't plan any outdoors.
So if it's forty.
Yeah.
If you have, if you have forty-six, you need one point.
So you need ten, you need eleven.
Eleven spaces, he's got forty-four spaces.
Right, yeah. That's what I was just gonna say, yeah.
And there'll be some patio stuff outside for a bit of season, so that will be more of the, more seats, but. But like you say, we have the rate, the rate, we're safe there.
Well, you wanna talk about outdoor seating, like how that works?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead. Because when you were talking to, um, you know, the restaurants wanting outdoor seating. Um, what it said was you, you still have to have. The, those are the receipts inside available. So that if you have, you know, the lanes or something, you have a place to put them. Um, so we're not, we're not adding, okay, so say you have, you know, forty seats inside. You can't have another forty seats or eighty seats outside. You have to do some of those, so say you just add ten outside, then you, you still.
Well, you could as long as you had enough parking spots for both of them, right?
If he comes in with site plan, ask for site plan approval for the extra seats outside and he'll be covered.
Well, that's the point.
Yeah, right.
You get forty-four parking places.
You have to count those for argument.
Right.
You're gonna have the inside full and the outside.
But you can have forty-four parking places, four, four persons per parking place, enough of that, I don't think it's easy.
Yeah.
There's more than covered.
I thought for a minute there, I thought you never would have to have seats backing up for the people when it rained, but.
Well, that's, that's what they, that's what they said for, it's a name, it's like the, uh. The depot.
Burger, what's the name?
Gordy's?
Yes, Gordy's, that's what you told.
Yeah, but wasn't that more so, I don't remember a hundred percent.
That's a little trickier because they have shared parking with everybody else. There's not really enough parking for what's already there, just there, so.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Charles on it too.
Would you be using, utilizing the intercept for Forest Ridge and the back end of the parking lot when the, when the original?
We, um. That team, that, two years ago, we blocked it off because people were shortcutting it.
Yeah.
And.
So I didn't want even.
Yes.
Might have opened the park dive for people, but Rachel would have to go around the, the highway back down, loop or come back.
I'd like to open up, but what I thought I'd do is turn the. Our parking, let's see, how do I say this? Parking presently at the common man. Is sort of north, south this way. In other words, it's from the side of the barn. Yeah. It, it's aisles this way, and I think I'm gonna turn the whole thing sideways. So if people wanted to shortcut, they'd have to go around. Thing.
Right. Be the one way around.
They really were using, people that lived there were actually using it and.
We don't have to put, to put in a.
And then just speed through, you know.
You can put a gate and two, upload them, do a, no, not pretty out.
I don't want.
Okay.
It, it, it can be open and I'm just gonna make.
Am I asking, Mr. Happy, just wanted to curious what it would be on.
I'd like to, oh, I'd like to open it again and I might even move it. Subject to you guys, I might move it down a little, so I don't want the handy parking lot all day.
Yeah.
Even the two in the afternoon, people are just zooming through, you know.
I was bringing it up now, because you probably put in your plan, we use it if you need it, if you're so needed, but have it approved right now, so we'd have to come back and say, my people.
It's something I didn't talk about with boom. Move it down a little, if, if it's not as convenient as the, where it is now. Then they wouldn't use, a guy lives back there or they're going to the recreation, whatever, so maybe. I would ask you, not tonight probably, but just make it, let's say, two, twenty or thirty feet west. So if people are. Are using it, I can't think, I don't know how many houses are out there.
There's gonna be four hundred and ninety-five minutes.
It's going to be, or there is.
No, it's fine.
Good. Right, well, the other place, they're linked up to sale. That's my hundred acres, that they do. No, no, no. Under market right now.
So to the point, that, that driveway is on a separate lot than what we're talking about.
What driveway?
It's on the common man, it's common man driveway.
The driveway that's between, on this, if you look at a little.
He's talking about.
See, they're talking about this guy, right, 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 yeah, yeah. What I'm trying to say is, you put it in your, in your next plan, possibly you the, and you approve now, you can just get back in again later on, later on. But then I'd have to bring all.
We can't approve that now, that puts in a, which in the middle submission for the next law. Okay, okay, that, that wasn't clear to me.
But if you came, let's get it all done one shot. We would have to give that, get ready to do. So we. So. Yeah. Yeah. We had.
We had questions on the.
I didn't get a number.
Well.
Were questions on, on the May, the, May third, twenty-two meeting about the. About the, uh, roads coming out onto Forest Bridge Drive and the, how the home motors and how it was gonna work with the, the hotel. And.
New hotel, you talked about.
A new hotel. Because there was trying to be.
Cooking?
It is.
Okay, good.
And so they're, they've been on the verge of submitting their, um, their land use permit application for months. Uh, but there, there's, they got it out of themselves. They got the process going from the state first instead of the town first. So anyway, they're.
They're gonna do what they're doing.
Yeah, they're on the way.
But there was a, how they were going to exit out onto that, and they were gonna have a crosswalk there. Um, there already is one, and I thought we had talked about. This, when they have, ready, can I finish? Thank you.
You know, feel?
I thought we had, we had talked about having a conversation with them. As well as talking to the D O T, because the D O T requires any new traffic to come out onto Route one twelve that, that they have. Take a look, they wanna take a look at it. So, but those two things, I think you'll, you might wanna have a conversation with Forest Ridge Association, whoever they are, because you now, instead of having just one. Coming out onto Forest Ridge Drive, you have two. And I don't know whether, how they're gonna feel about that, but I think you're gonna, that conversation. Um, and the same thing with the D O T. Because they, they have that requirement that, hey, any new traffic coming out onto there, they wanna be able to.
It's a new driveway.
Take a look at it. Well, I'm not sure it's a new driveway permit, because you've already got the one up there and you've got the one coming out on, the rest is coming out Paul Road, Stan Road, so that's going on. It's, they may not look at it that way, but you probably, you gotta look at it.
They're the one way in line.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, the other thing was the water and sewer. Um. And our minutes, I started to read something about the water and sewer. Um. There was restrictions due to the size of the piping and, and ability to carry the volume of wastewater home to Sweets, that's part of the sewer capacity. And have agreed to increase the size of sewer pipe sometime. Uh, I'm not sure how all that's worked with the town, but the selectmen may know, uh, the town.
At this point, nothing has been done to increase the size of the sewer, but, um. The home, is it still home to Sweets, whatever they call themselves, um, is studying that or needs to study that in order to accommodate. Their sewer flow down Main Street.
You think they submitted the data or put in the request with the money for Weston Sampson? For doing a. You know, it was the thing after you.
Okay.
Um, so they've been working with Ray and they've been working with Wes Sampson. Um, on that problem.
Who, do you think that Ray, that, um. He needs to work with Ray Forber?
Yeah, it should probably, should probably talk.
We got it, we made an agreement through their lawyer, Jack Armick, to, um. To come through my property with the pipe. This is water, not sewer, is that, but sewer. And, um, they, they want, I said, if you will put the tap on when you can do yours, that, I don't, that'll help me.
But there's some restrictions somewhere. I think as, as it comes down on Main Street, it'll only, it goes bigger to smaller.
Right, the restriction on Main Street is the second.
Right outside here.
Right out in this area here, where it's not, where it's at capacity. And that they can handle no more sewer for their calculations.
To that manhole, I think, and then it gets bigger.
Right, it's a section in here, and I don't know where it starts, where it ends, but it needs to be enlarged. If additional sewer capacity is going to be upstream.
Yeah.
And that's the one that Home for Sweets is, is looking into right now. And working with our engineer to propose a solution to that. So that would also affect you. Now, if that job is complete before you're ready to build, then it probably won't be an issue. But you should check that out with.
Right.
Ray Forber to see what the status of that is and if when they enlarge it, it's gonna be a sufficient size.
Find out who's on first base or.
Exactly.
What's his last name, Ray?
Cor, K O R B E R.
Yeah, he's the town engineer.
And can we, did we get, excuse me, the contact with him directly? I, I mean, do we have to go through town to get to him or?
Um, well, I'll email him, um. Usually there, I mean, he's a subcontractor, so yeah, there's.
Right.
Put money escrow in order to have him do an analysis or whatever it is. Sometimes, um, you know, we do the fifteen minute thing, that's we pay for. Um, but if he has to do more than that, we don't just ask for.
Sure.
Money involved.
Is, is there any problems with water, or, or did, you know, just sewer work does that? Okay. And, and then you'll have your, I mean, in here, when I'm just looking back at these minutes. You might wanna get a copy, there was, um, there was a storm, the town has a stormwater management ordinance that you'll have to comply with for that. And then there was the access for fire protection. It looks like you've got plenty of room for fire trucks to turn around, but you're gonna wanna have a conversation or show this to the. Fire chief, but he can see about turning around and they, you know, it's all thanks.
Well, you've got two inches.
Right, yeah, right. I mean, I think it, by looking at it, seems like you have plenty, but those are the types of things I think you're, you're gonna wanna, before you commit for your final site plan review, you're gonna wanna probably have that.
Joe. Okay. Remember correctly, the sewer line, we talked about this some time ago, about three years, I believe. So I go down Paul Road, could handle some extra capacity, it goes back to get it down by the Hampton End, am I correct? You could divert some of the snow line coming out this way to get on Paul Road and connect.
That's, that's a conversation that they need to have with Ray, that Ray knows all of that stuff. I know that was discussed with the home suite. And, and the solution was to fix the pipe out here. There is something going down Paul Road also, if for some reason.
Paul Road is pretty close to.
Some reason, the solution was to fix the pipe out here. I'm not an engineer, if, if they wanna talk about Paul Road with Ray Forber, that would be a good idea.
There was another school. Going down by the rivers, coming up by, with a third line going to back of the development all year also. Down back.
Correct. I, I don't know, I don't know. They always talked about it being sort of in front of Union Bank area, but I don't know if it's ten feet or two hundred feet, or I, I, I don't know.
That, is that something for the town to fix, or is it going to be a developer? Thing where that because of expansion that it could be fixed?
Like they could.
If, the, the town can handle the sewer line that we have right now, the piping we have. So if there's an increase in demand, that's gonna, that's what's gonna trigger.
Someone else to pay.
Which, which, home to sweets right now is the triggering party.
But I'm sure the men define it, Alex is gonna build something, they're gonna wanna get help there too, I'm sure.
They've already asked, we'd said yes, and the deal was I, I'd give them that ease, because otherwise they have to be out in the road, I guess, or. So. I think that's what we worked out. They said, can we cross through these properties for our hotel? I said, yeah. Cause I'm gonna, if you weren't there, I'm gonna have to buy it anyway, but. If you do it before us, I wanted him to put a live tap in.
Yeah.
That's all I asked. That was for a hotel five or six years ago, maybe longer. We made a contract deal, so it's still in place.
If I remember correctly, Part Four, the, well, Part Four should drive that your property just have need to go through the original S A T agreements.
Say that again.
They put Forest Ridge Drive in presently.
Yeah.
They get an easement for this property, you have the common man on it.
Yeah.
You're going back to it. On the upper end, backside, that was part of your, that was part of recent part of that land, Forest Ridge got a, S A T got an agreement, an easement, to put that road into Forest Ridge.
Where they, where's their water I have coming in?
I'm not sure what the water, I'm just talking about the easement for the road.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything out there.
You know, we're having that deal with S A T.
But it was, but it's that.
There is something in the. In the documents. That. There are not supposed to be any more. Um, accesses off of Forest Ridge Drive, like I remember when Dave wanted to put one in. Forest Ridge said that they couldn't do it. The only one according to the deed, and they were labeled was Alan Patterson's driveway. He was the only one that was in that, the deed. That, that could have access off of that road, no one else.
Is the common man. It's common man deed is, they, they probably.
You'll wanna look at that deed for that, for that, that road.
Yeah.
Because there was something in there, it was, it was given by, um, the paper mill company to. And the only one that could. The only one that could get, that was deeded off of that was Alan Patterson's driveway.
The company was called Green Acres at the time.
Green Acres, right.
Maybe you could swap from this one to the.
I may copy that some, I don't.
Yeah, you could trade, you can close this one up and swap it for years.
You know, I mean, that goes all the way, and this other one's.
I've been looking into that because I'm not sure that's the case. I, I, I think you're right.
I've got a couple, you remember when Dave tried, they came in?
I think you're right, but. Forest Ridge Road starts obviously at the, at Route one twelve. Originally, that was Greenacre Woodland, not originally, but back when S A T was developing it, it was Greenacre Woodlands property. And, and it continues up through the whole Forest Ridge, but it was very impractical to build a road on their property up over the ledge and the hill. I mean, it would have been impossible. So they made a deal with the town that they, they went around, I think, Joe's right, I think that crosses your property and there's an easement back there. Then it goes on to the old town road that used to go out just to the Kankrek area.
Correct.
Okay, that's the, where the restriction is, is that.
There.
On the town section of road, they said that Alan Patterson's driveway exists, it can still exist on their private road.
Right.
And the town gets to share it because we. And the town gets to share it because we.
Have the Cank Rec.
It was our road. And they basically used our road to become their road, but we have access to it up to the Cank Rec area. After it goes by the Cank Rec area, it goes back onto the old Greenacre, Green, Greenacre Woodlands.
Greenacre Woodlands.
Property and becomes.
So you're saying from where Landry is. Back to the Route one twelve, that that section there is not part of the original?
Town road, no, the town road used to go up to the left side of the common man.
It did.
And then, and then gradually turned left closer to Donnie Landry's house, didn't go up straight and T, it went off. At a, you know this, you lived in the neighborhood, at an angle. And then went around to the Cank Rec area and ended. And they used that road instead of going up and over the.
But when they made this, when they made this from. Section. You can all see it on the thing here, this little dotted line going across here, so. I don't know, it's on the inside, I'm sorry, so. This other section where you go in and out of Forest Ridge Drive, that's owned by Forest. Who's that owned by?
Well, that was part of the original SADA property. And that road is controlled by Forest Ridge, but. I know on the um.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, they had a condition that they could access Forest Ridge Road from there. On your side, I don't know what's in your deed or their deed, if there's a, if there's a legit access to Forest Ridge Drive, you'd have to look at your deeds for that.
So the water that feeds that. Development out back. I, that. Comes up to the old road. The old. Um. What do they call it? Short road.
The Cank Rec Road?
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. Is, is that where they get their water?
I don't know.
I don't know, I know you live at Water House.
But uh, Nate Halloway. Yeah?
I'm sure it would.
Nate Halloway may know, he's a public works director.
And there may be multiple ones, as Joe just mentioned, there's, there may be one that goes up Main Street extension.
Wait to make a pretty central, let them do it.
And into the back part of Forest Ridge. I don't know.
That kind.
I think some of, some of it does down there, but I don't know whether it goes, like you said, down by Donnie Landry's, it goes there.
Yeah.
And you know, or. Deal a robot. They have to check into that before you get too far into this type of thing.
I, I think the water's gonna be easy for you, you got water in front of you, behind you.
Right.
I think it's, it's that driveway access, you're, you're proposing two car cuts on the Forest Ridge Drive, wow. Do you have legal acts, legal rights to do that, I don't know.
No.
You may, Alex, is there, is there a reason you just? Talking to him, Joe, okay, can't forget putting those out on Forest Ridge Drive, you just come out. The way you proposed to come on Paul Road. And the only reason I say that's because then you don't have to mess with any of that. You know, I mean, if you could just. Forget that one way out there, and I, I don't know if you can do that, but if you could eliminate these two. That come out on Forest Ridge Drive right now.
Where, come out where on the bus?
What about, by the, by the island?
I'm talking about those, those two that are.
Are you saying, don't come out of Forest Ridge at all?
Right, don't come on Forest Ridge Drive at all, and just come out on to Paul Road. I mean, the amount of traffic that you're gonna have there, I would think that that would be.
That's the point.
Yeah, and, and, and just don't show these two on here, and then I, you don't have to mess with anything with Forest Ridge. Then they're not gonna get upset at you because you're bringing cars out onto their property, you don't have to worry about the deed at right away. You don't have to worry about any of that, if, if. This will handle it, and it looks to me like, I mean. Forty-four cars. Coming out in, under that doesn't seem to me to be a real issue.
I, I would check the deed first, it's not an issue.
Right.
Just leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
It's in your deed that you have a right to that road.
That island.
They, they need water all the way up to the hotel, and it's gonna, and it's gonna come on Paul Road, I think, right down. Right down to that manhole that's out there. Probably, and that's when they came to me and said, we come down our property, run through your front yard, and they said, yes. If you, if you will uh. Put my tap in for me, if you come first. If they come first, we still have to put a bigger pipe in that distance. So I would ask, I would get a contract from them that they, they said they would pay for that. Pipe, but I would, I'd. I'd break. Build it anyway first, you know what I mean, I think I'll be there before they are.
Hmm, right. Just, just a couple, the, the pipe we're talking that needs to be rebuilt though, is the sewer pipe. Not the water.
I thought it was water.
No, it's sewer pipes, sewer capacity.
All the time we did the talking, it's still.
But I don't think the water's gonna be an issue.
Okay.
You can get it from somewhere, I don't know where it was. Best waters, but you can get it, it's a sewer.
So it's not enough for a hotel, or is there enough for a diner?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
So they might, they might, might not even be an issue for that.
Yeah, but after I. When that all worked, when that worked big.
And that's up to them, they should check.
And Jim made a good point. It's the size of the hotel that's triggering the increase.
Bigger pipe, yeah.
With the restaurant of the size of your building, I don't know if it'll trigger it or not.
But with a hotel, it's already in for site four. It's already been discussed.
Ah, it's already been vested because it's been approved, right, I think, I think that's, that's how, that is how it works.
Yeah.
So never mind what I just said. Thank you. Um, but, but we were talking of, you know, that, that access to Forest Ridge Drive, we were, we were talking about more of the traffic. Not the water.
Yeah.
You know, and again, that's where I checked your deed, do you have a legal? Deeded access to that, to that road?
And the reason I say, the reason I say that, Alex, is because when the.
I gave him the land.
When the hotel came in.
For that road. That whole curve.
Those are massive, I mean, you reserved an easement.
Because that, that was all rocky, we actually done that.
Well, when the hotel came in. When the hotel came in, Forest Ridge homeowners came in and they were. They commented about the amount of traffic and how it was gonna affect them. So just so you know. They could come in for this too. And, and that's all I was trying to say, that you can only meet, that you don't have to deal with it.
You mean the traffic um, to that first, that entrance, that exit?
Now, if I was living in Paul Road, I don't want least amount of traffic to be in.
That's what I was gonna say. You know, you're gonna, you're gonna dump all the traffic in a residential league.
You're gonna dump, oh, you're gonna bring your traffic out, and it's gonna come on Paul Road, and then go out onto Route one twelve.
You know what kind of traffic block that's gonna make at that corner?
What's that?
The traffic, it's busy as heck on weekends. And very large traffic coming in and out. By adding another couple hundred cars per hour going out, it's gonna impact.
The only time it's busy, Joe, is that night when we were trying to get in to common man. Because people wanna go in there and eat, and it's only when they, when they first come in, other than that. That corner doesn't get. That's.
But then the people coming out, that you shook that, it was on Paul Road, that's what I'm trying to make. Like you wanna block off Paul Road by the, north again, have to go back on Main Street.
Um, are you talking about traffic flow onto the common man property?
No, from coming out of the common man, coming out of your new diner, our, our.
Yeah.
Twenty feet apart. On a corner, and it's only a short distance before you, before that traffic stops, to turn right or left on Route one twelve.
This is true.
Right, yeah.
So if there's, if there's.
We don't have. That much traffic. Out that one. They come in from. Uh. Well, roads, which way they're coming, but they come in to the common man, this will be, that will still be the busiest entrance. The place, you know. In the front.
Yeah. Okay. The toll durs this entire time when it first started, after that, when they're first filling up. Other than that, it's very salt-like, I tell you, I use them, that's how I go in and out. And you know, the only reason I go down the other way, come out.
Okay, yeah.
Where the cross street there, but north again, because you have a better line of sight, up and down Main Street, that's why I have more room to get. For queuing to get in, out, or the corner to get out on Main Street, so for me, that's easier, but I can tell you. I would be out there. I just, I just think it's. Yeah.
And I assume they're coming.
Back that firm, that's there, that had a right, added into that. There's no personal use, we saw, that on their property.
And if you're talking about queuing. When they come out from Forest Ridge Drive, and, and there's. Say there. You get just the one right hand turnout, there's someone there, and then you got the other proposed drive down, down from that. And then there's people coming out from Forest Ridge and from the new hotel, the queuing area is pretty small, all of that come out of there. So, you know, you. You're better off to let it queue back into the, the parking area that he has, come out on Paul Road. Cause then it doesn't, you know, it's, it's really not, and not everyone's gonna leave, but once they may come. You know, when they get there, but they're gonna leave slowly, you know, methodically, it's not gonna be that. But you know, you, you really don't have a whole lot of, if you think about what's coming out on the Forest Ridge Drive, Alex. You have your. Right hand turnout only, and you have the next proposed driveway. But then you have all those units up at Forest Ridge, the Cank Rec area, and. The new hotel, proposed hotel, so. That kinda, I mean, if you take a look at that, just think about that.
Okay, so, we have for. For that, um, east side exit is, is the right turn only, right? And, and they're only going like twenty feet out to the road. Now, now, now they gotta wait in line, or.
Well, they may not be able to get out, and might screw up your, your. Through traffic, can you turn around, you know, your window?
Cause didn't we have, did you have the uh, the hotel move the island somewhere?
They, they were gonna have to do that when they were gonna do the, remember when the crosswalk was gonna come across?
Yeah.
And the turnway used to get out of the hotel? They were gonna have to do. Cut some of that down. And, and the Forest Ridge didn't really like it either.
And then they found out the crosswalk already just going across in front of it.
Yeah.
They've been having to put it over there. You remember the, yeah, concept we came in with?
Yeah, I think they're leaving that island the same.
Correct.
You think they're leaving it?
Yeah, I thought they were gonna shorten it up, cause the, the turner radius.
Change it.
Anyway.
One of the plans I talked to, they'll ask about that.
Have, have they submitted those plans yet? So, I mean, it's.
Be nice to look at that, right? They just have a lot coming out of Forest Bridge, but I think.
Okay, any other questions from anybody?
I did, go ahead. Only because I'm so used to reviewing prints, but I don't see a location, I know this is preliminary for. Cocaine tank location, and I also didn't know if you'd be cooperating more like landscaping and planting between the parking areas. For the restaurant and diner.
No, we haven't done a landscaping plan. One thing is to. Um, where the, where the setback is on the road. There's a drop of about four or five feet in there, so I wanna put in a stone wall, that, that slowed down the swale that goes through. That will be right where the. Right where the, cause we got a lot of rock in the property, so. We're good.
I said, rocks where?
No, I didn't know, it's like between the parking areas, if you put more trees or something.
Yes.
Eliminated so many.
Good.
We, we can do the site plan review.
Well, I know. Thinking.
I mean, the next time we'll try to give you a little. Indication of. We've already taken quite a few trees out, but we've left.
A big pine tree is gonna be coming down in about ten years. In the corner you left. With the twenty feet of pine with the root that kills.
Yeah.
And excavation. And it's so tall and brittle, pine will by itself is very brittle. Wind blows, they really grow together, they stay intact, they'll sway back and forth. One pines out by itself.
Yeah.
Ten, it'll break off on the top.
No, the question on landscaping that I had was just because it would be nice to have like a barrier between the two, kinda like.
Between what?
The, the existing restaurant and the diner location in the parking, just be nice to have some separation in between the two.
Yeah, we haven't really done it yet.
Yeah.
Quite a lot more maintenance too.
Yeah.
It's prettier.
Like the whole same property realistically.
Right, right, I know, but it's just nicer to have more green space and landscaping. Okay. Somebody pulls in with a dog in the car, they're gonna park.
You can check with, you can check with Ray Forber about that stormwater, didn't quite.
Right, I did, I. I left an area down. I saw it. But I, we got sides and everything else. Yeah.
I, I have another, go ahead. Question, you had mentioned possibility of outdoor dining.
Yeah.
It, it looks like inside your restaurant is. It doesn't look like there's any room because the drive through lane goes like right at that front door.
Yeah.
And then. On the other side, on the left side, you have the loading dock, on the right side, you have driveway, is, is there enough room to do it?
It, it, it'll be on, if there is any, it'll be on the west end of the diner, all the way around that. The west side, and I'm like, say that. You, you can see that, that, the uh. Present, um, one. What, what are they, five foot? Yeah. Where you got, uh, right here. At this area, for, you get your loading dock here, so you could be talking about. The, basically this area in here.
Any handicap and a loading dock?
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah, we might have to rework that, I had the same thought. Uh, we, oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a place that, that they can come up, and by the way, we, the dumpster. Thing is up on.
Yeah, it did that.
Yeah, we saw that. Across the driveway. Fenced in. And you mentioned uh, cocaine about, it will be a very, very tank.
It, it just seems to me like this would be a great location for some outdoor dining, which is. Although our season is short, it's very popular for people to eat outside, which is why all of these restaurants. After COVID, when they had to do outdoor, they now all wanna do that, you know, Gordy's expanded theirs, the Mexican restaurant expanded theirs. Um. Yeah, take motorbike, I mean, everybody's expanding their outdoor dining, there's a demand. Give an ideal spot for it, so.
Okay, well, you were right, that, that, it looks to me like dining is shorted out. Yeah.
And also, that, that's where the driveway, where the diner is gonna go.
This is the final plan, uh, something.
What does that mean, that they're cutting?
Yeah, they're changing those sizes.
Good. Why it's that long anyway? Okay, so this is there.
Well, they wanna cut it, but. I don't think Forest Bridge was. Real happy about it.
Right, there's a big sign for Forest Ridge, one of the other ways. Man, I'll email it to you.
The deck of final boom.
Yeah. Is this, cause it says conceptual on you, but is this the plan?
That's the, that's the final plan, remember he modified it a little bit, it was de minimis.
Yeah, right, right.
That's the de minimis one.
Good.
Okay, anyone have any other questions? Channel have any other questions for us?
I don't know.
I don't. Uh. I know. Right now, uh, at least I know where to go, but.
Thank you. Thank you. So we know who to talk to, Ray, quarter.
Nate Halloway, yeah. Public Works Director.
Now, what's the?
Just, uh, the manager of the department of customization.
Yeah, well.
Well, one twelve is there, though.
Yeah.
And when we don't. Our traffic onto their road. Even though even though it's certainly not on their road, but it ends up on your.
Yeah, because a lot of times they wanna know about stacking.
Right. You know what district this is? We got a good new guy in the O P. Will pass. We've been there thirty six years and the lady is gone. It's just a really big guy. Clear, we'll we'll clear, we put on the. Final plan patio area.
What what's your dining frame, what do you want? We don't want?
No. To be honest, uh.
We, like you said, you had a ready for permit in order to bring some fill in the. The excess, that's that's. We'll stump it, we can't do any of that, so.
You need some.
Right. You only know what's from it in there to. We do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, can't wait to see it.
I haven't pushed it, it'll be pretty cool.
Well, I've been at diner enforcement, I never, I won't see what it's like over here. I think I've eaten at all these times, most of you.
Does anybody want another one of these?
Do you have a digital version of these two?
I can send you one, sure, okay, um. Okay. What's new, I did.
Yep.
What's new?
What's that?
What's new in?
The Hampton Ninja opens up their grand opening yesterday.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How many rooms are there?
Ninety three three.
All sorts of room, there's no places to eat out.
No place to eat, you got. You're kidding, right?
No. Or that's just a pretty, pretty.
Even dinner, I mean, you know, you go out, I mean. This time of year when it's off season, a little bit before it gets into, yeah, this is. This about, you can go all grab. Place, but once people start showing up.
There's lines.
There's lines, and yeah, yeah, it it's incredible. Even the pancake house, he denied it forty minutes. That's crazy.
For staff, so it's really hard for people to come and work in the community because there's no. That's everyone, though.
Thank you.
See what we can do to help.
There you go.
Thank you.
Well, maybe, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's play, we get some workforce, I'll be coming in. Have a good night, Alex.
Hey, that's Michelle, she's still in California.
You the uh.
I've been here for twenty years. What's that? I've been here for twenty years. Michelle over. A dog's always coming to visit me.
I remember she kept a horse that.
You're probably the, I remember it was back when I was a kid.
Yeah, she she had her horse there for a while. Yeah, she's. It'll label it thing for a time. She doesn't live in Telluride, you have to live out of town.
Of course.
Thank you, and.
Thank you.
Used to live on the second floor. At the inn.
Yeah.
She meant she worked there.
Are you done with that work with that? He pitched the concept, you get over here.
Yeah.
He pitched it yet? He pitches the basement when you go in, put it in W Y. I've got me in my home.
Okay.
Hey, guys, go this one, but.
Yeah.
Dave, right, that's where he's playing with the workforce out there.
Right, I heard that, yeah.
Supposedly won't start there first because. They'd be ashamed to have these people here like put out because.
I think they've already asked them all, we've.
Yeah.
You need to try to find place for a lot of them.
Where is that?
They need to try to find place, a lot of people will be kicked out of their apartment over here.
Yeah, and Sprow was saying that I was surprised he didn't start building the other location so that he could help the people that. Like here currently.
Probably go first.
So he's kicked people out of it, but he hasn't even come to site.
Think that was additional sales.
There's a couple of them going to make a green.
Want to ask my phone.
This isn't housing, though, that's.
With that?
It is, but you gotta take your old bills of town.
People living in the motel. You have a better, a new place for the new map, you'll hear one.
S S P I twenty twenty. Yeah, one twenty one lot fifty, South Peak LLC, Mark Bogian D B A. And Loon Mountain Recreation Corporation, Brian North, President, General Manager. Do changes to the Pemmy Base Camp since the two thousand and four approval for Pemmy Base. Pemmy Base Camp ski warming that in South Peak by the Planning Board. Approval for Pemmy. Pemmy Base Camp ski warming that in South by the Planning Board amount to what could be considered a substantial change or expansion of use. Such as the Pemmy Base, I need another same thing, we will prove, review the file.
Well, we did not figure out absolutely everything in the corner, it was huge. We all have.
Says a temporary fabric pack. Is that, I'm still there?
I'm sorry, what? It's a fabric.
But it's still no changes?
Not to the outside of them.
The um. When I looked at all my information, I stuck him up with. The right. The facts of the thing is that. It was. I mean, if you look at the history of it. Built the original birth. Building permit. Number zero seven dash four four, which we had a copy of. It was granted in two thousand and four. If you look on back. If you look on it. It sounded like an. Building permit. That says that it was approved by the planning board in eleven of oh four. When you look on eleven of oh fours. Minutes, there's nothing that gives. Anything, no mention of anything that gives an approval.
You didn't give a course, I know that.
So the only, the only thing. That that we have to go. Go with is. The water and sewer tap assessments that were given. To. And I'm not sure. That it was. Approved. As a singular thing, I think it might have been approved as part. If it was approved, it might have been mentioned as part of the the. Original lot. As an amenity to the to one of the lots. All of the lots that were there. But when you look at the sewer tap assessment. It was only, it was for, it was for a hundred and seventy six seats. And gave. The. All the other things, it had no bars, it had no kitchens. And the sewer tap assessment was for a hundred and seventy six seats. It had no bars and no kitchens in it.
We came for the plane board, we didn't mention about. Even not resting in. The record. When it came in to take a view on it, it didn't mention having a father.
So. I'm I'm just saying there's no fact states that, there's nothing mentioned in the minutes. That the only, the only facts we have are. The sewer tap. And the the water tap assessment for that. And the fact that that um. And then. What you have is. In twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty. You have a. Permit to operate a place of assembly. Two hundred outs or two hundred inside seats.
Two hundred?
Two hundred inside seat, that's in twenty, that's in twenty.
Well, see, in the place of assembly, if you look at that letter. August eleventh, two thousand and three. It also says two hundred seat tent, but that's space, that's basically a calculation. Based on space. Each person requires X number of square feet. Um, so they're kind of like apples and oranges, one is, what did you approve it for? Seat wise, and what is the fire safety code?
Right. And Loon. Loon has owned, Loon owned it. And then what Loon did was they sold the property. And on tax cards, the property is. Is Bogians. And the. Tent structure, the fabric structure is Loon's.
You get the business, get the business.
And what Loon does is they they. Have since leased that to Bogian.
Yeah.
Or it's not Bogian, it's um, what's it called, that thing? Yes, yeah, the restaurant group. So. I'm not sure how many seats were approved because. On on the. Sewer and water tap thing, it says a hundred and seventy six.
Right.
On the place of assembly, it was two hundred. But there was never any bars or kitchens in there, and and you know, OJ. I kind of doubted myself, but I I started going around talking and I remembered who was the. The food and beverage director back then, or I thought I did, so I actually called, called a person. And. They. They agreed that there was. That they never had any kitchens. Or. That there were never any bars, they would, when it was first done. And actually, there wasn't even, there wasn't even a deck outside the front, when I first got it, it was. It was more like a picnic lunch type thing and that they brought, they would bring the food from the octagon and the governor's lodge it down there, and they had some soft drinks and some coffee. Um, the downstairs portion, because it's a full basement down, it was gonna be, it was supposed to originally be. Supposed to originally be lockers for. Um, the home, ski lockers and stuff, that's what they're originally gonna do that for. And I asked them, and I said, so when did all the other stuff start happening? Because my son had a wedding there, and I I know there was a kitchen down. At the bottom. He said, well, what happened was as we got busier there, we just started. Doing things, we put a kitchen in hand, and we did this, we did, he said. And I I said, do you know if they read any approvals? He goes, well, no, we just went, we, I don't know, he said, we just, they just. We just started adapting to whatever. The things happen. So I think that that's what's happened to another degree, so Loon took it and they adapted as they went along since two thousand and four. And changed some things, they never had bars in there until the. They might had a bar, a a small. Uh cocktail bar. Um. And I don't know when he he said, it, because it goes back twenty years, he said, you know, my memory just doesn't. I've been in it long, he says. For a while. So then. What happened is. Along with Mark Bogian. Leases it. And. In his. I mean, he did this. Pemmy Base Camp thing that shows it's all all new, the new improved South Peak Base Camp, includes live musical. Open land on weekends and holiday weeks. It's a new, I mean, all all of his literature is all about the whole thing, he changed it. And e- even he agreed he was gonna come in for cycling review. You know, and because it was, it was changed, well, it never happened. So. What's been added is. Loon added some stuff to accommodate their guests. As the time went on, and then Bogian took it over and did this. The brew, whatever that Cisco Brewery thing is, he put that into there and modified it all. And so what's really been modified is that. I think it's the water and sewer tap. Assessments beca- because. Of the the bars and the kitchens, and and there's now, instead of one kitchen downstairs, there's one kitchen downstairs, one kitchen upstairs. If you look at that, the the plan that they have for uh. For that Pemmy Base Camp. And then there's two bars, it's a real big bar. There's a shorter bar. And then there's an area, then there's a band area, and and that was all added on, I think in twenty twenty two when Bogosia did. When he did this. Promotion for for his for the Pemmy Base Camp. I mean, and. If you look at the. Kind of water and sewer tap assessment things, it says that, and there that any, what's it say, says something.
I mean, it looks like town manager at the time got a plus two hundred seats, and then they came in a few weeks later. And say we have a hundred and seventy. We have a hundred and seventy six seats because.
Right.
Town manager looking for seventeen six, they pay sixteen. Eighteen sixteen, so, like, you know, east.
I also talked to Steve Noseworthy. He said. When we left one night, he was talking about it, and I said, did you ever go there? He goes, I used to go there all the time, just just like you said, it was. It was some of the best scan, and no one was around and stuff like that, he said. I I used to love to go on that lodge because there was nobody there, it was, it it was a brown bag, bring your brown bag, and it was, you know, the minutes, sodas, hot chocolates, or something, but. I think the point is that it has changed a lot. I don't think Loon. Maybe didn't, I I don't think they thought it was enough to make a. A big change, but it was because. When you look at the um. When you look at the water and sewer assessment thing, it says that the. If any changes. Happen. Um, that that that's considered a. That's on water and sewer depth assessment. Portion. Right. Anyway, it's considered, it's considered a change. The the town. So be deemed a new. Any changes for water and sewer should be deemed new construction for the purposes thereof. Um. And and you have to, you have to take care of your permit again, the place.
We, we say that on that yellow garment?
It 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 says that on the um. On the water system and sewer system. Coordinates for the town, so if you change something and put in new. Water and sewer things, that's, it it it's a change.
Well. I mean, apparently, even the town manager agrees.
What what the town manager did and even Bogojan did. I'm not sure, when it comes to the seats, I still think there's a question about that, but there's also. On the twenty twenty. Place Assembly Permit. It it expires in twenty twenty one, so I don't know if they've got a new. Place of Assembly Permit or not since twenty twenty one, but apparently these things expire.
And they don't keep them, that's the problem.
Right.
They only hang on to them for a couple of years.
And and then when you read that letter from the attorney. All the way in Hollis.
Attorney Lick.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Oh, whatever, I mean, she she wrote and said that they were transferring the operations from Loon to Bogojan. Um, under the New Hampshire Restaurant Group, and she's, she talked about. She said the lodge will be operated as has in the past, well. It's got two bars, so they change, the death roll of change for me, so it's not operated and and changes. The hours of operation will be consistent with the days, hours during which Loon previously operated, well, that's not the case because. And and their advertisements that talk about staying open late and they got a ban. Um. I mean. So the bars, the smallest, I mean, the stage, I just. I don't mind any of this because I went over to it, and I think it's a pretty hot place, I really didn't like it, all I'm saying is, I think what they need to do is just come in and do a safe plan review and get what they want and and and. Make it right, that's all I'm saying, and I. It it seems to be a really. Small thing to ask, but.
They don't think so, the permit for the deck.
Well, yeah, the.
They have outside seating?
I believe so, yeah, I mean, they showed in one of the photographs that they're outside having drinks, so there has to be outside seating.
No, but I don't.
That's now.
I don't have a permit for that.
How big is the deck, you know, it's more than five hundred square feet?
But I can tell you on 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 the twenty twenty one, there's on the twenty twenty. Place of Assembly Permit, there is forty five outside patio seats. In the place of assembly, so somewhere. That was included, I don't know when it was, all I'm saying is, the changes have more, that's pretty much what. This food and beverage director said, just kept doing it, and just. I think what it did, and and now Bogosian is taking it and brought it to another level, which, there's nothing wrong with it, I'm just saying. It just means you just gotta commit safely review, that's all.
Yeah, that's what they were doing today.
It's not, it's not a big deal, I I. I don't understand it, they can get what they want, unless some of the homeowners up there have a problem with it, but I. I don't understand it, they can get what they want, uh, unless some of the homeowners up there have a problem with it, but I. I don't think anyone's been complaining about it. I mean, I walked outside the building when they were at the band going and you couldn't. You really couldn't hear it. I mean, these guys were screaming, hollering and there was a country western band. My wife and I went to check it out and we parked right out. Right close to it and we couldn't hear, we couldn't hear, I I doubt anyone's gonna complain about that, but I'm just saying. With all these other people that come to us, the. The hotels, the restaurants, the tents, the this, that, we get treated everybody the same and we can't just. We gotta be consistent.
No, they just need to come in and clean up.
We gotta be consistent and that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying I'm, you're not gonna give it to them, we gotta be consistent, that's all I'm.
Tap fees being additional kitchen or anything.
Well, that's the other thing.
Well, not for the additional kitchen, not for what shows. I mean, I guess, I mean, I thought they were proposing to put the kitchen in downstairs, but it's already in.
Yeah, my son had a wedding. My son was married.
Pay for anything more, the only thing they paid for is what's on the building permit from two thousand seven.
Wait, didn't they pay since then for some bar sink?
You're right, OJ, there was some, there were some prep sinks and stuff that they had from the original.
To the Mark Pergosian, that was, but nothing in between the original. And Mark Pergosian's additional sinks.
And I think that this change here is what we're talking about really, what Loon did, as you says twenty years ago, but this change here. With this. Which brings out all the other stuff, really is what. Indicates that that I think that it should come in cycle plan, that's all.
I think I think the issue is we don't distinguish create a restaurant and a bar and the land use plan order, so they. You know, if they take. Four tables and four seats and it said they build a bar with sixteen seats, I don't know if that constitutes a change of use.
We have.
Sample land use, when I, you know, when I gotta talk about little.
But we have what. When people have come in for um, live music and stuff like that, we have. We have a- asked them to come in for that. Um, the tank motor launch is one example.
They were building, weren't they building an addition?
They were gonna.
And when was this?
They had to come in and so did um, um, what's your name at the gazebo.
Yeah, and then and then there was another one too that came in.
They were changing the use of the property, they weren't like adding a bar to an, excuse me, a band to an existing restaurant. I I mean, I don't remember, but.
But I think when you change things.
I mean, they they had bands inside one love brewery back when it was. Back when it was Donny G. Okay, what triggered that site plan was doing it out of the gazebo. Okay, that was, that was the change in use, now I think that's.
Basically, because they converted that gazebo.
But the hours, the hours over there.
Yeah, unless this condition's limiting their hours with their initial site plan. You know what I mean? If we said, well, you're only open to six.
Well, we don't distinguish, well, the state doesn't distinguish because you have, when you have alcohol, don't you have to have a restaurant? Serving food in order to have.
I understand that, but we don't like make a jump.
A separate category, but just have restaurant, drive up restaurant.
I mean, you know, I mean, personally, I think they probably should have committed recycling review to add the deck. They probably owe the town some water and tap fees, they got a three.
We've got kitchens, two kitchens.
I mean, I I can.
Three fixed reductions on both calculations because they were using paper plates.
Yeah, they still could be used to paper plates.
Supposedly they are.
Okay, so then there's nothing to add.
I mean, technically. The bar seat is half the price of water sewer tap fee wise, half the price of a restaurant seat. So they've converted restaurant seats to bar seats, we owe them money.
What if they have two kitchens instead of one? They have two kitchens that were not parked, depends on all the pictures.
On the bar seat.
Right, on calculation.
On that calculation, we would owe them money.
I didn't think those tap fees are refunded.
They're not, they're not.
Well, when you look, when you look at those.
That they always, the the things, it's like, well. They've changed both directions.
If they had a hundred and sixty.
What is a kitchen?
Interesting question.
Their original proposal back in two thousand and whatever was was. That there would be warming stuff up there, but but be cooked outside. Now, I don't know about the downstairs kitchen, I'm just hearing that for the first time tonight because I never knew that existed, but I know when you look in the back there. They have things that warm up soup or warm up, but they don't, there's no grill, deep fry.
Oh, they do, no, no, they don't have a deep fryer.
They don't have a grill, they have a couple of warming ovens. You can put like paninis in and or.
They've done one of those griddles, I think, and there's what I saw, but. I mean, it it it's it's called kitchen.
Have they gone to preparing and serving on site or just serving? Are they still just serving on site?
Was they preparing and serve on site?
You know, that's a change, no, I mean, it's not a change maybe for site plan review.
All I'm saying is, I I'm just trying to look. I'm trying to keep everybody. If someone else comes in, and that's why I look at it, if someone else comes in with a, with a. A similar, similar thing. I mean, I actually, the the guy over here that did the um. From the ski thing, he went in, but he was putting a kitchen in, so that was a change of use. But. I mean, if someone changes. Changes their. A- adds more point, how do you, how do you know that, so?
I mean, I'm just reading this last paragraph of town manager's letter. August eleven two thousand and three. Says that's disgusting. Let's discuss that the August fourth selectment meeting, do you agree to contact the town if any significant changes are made to the tent such as installation of a kitchen? Or construction of a more permanent structure? In that case, we would revisit visit this issue and determine at that time what additional fees, if any, should be assessed. Under such a scenario, consideration would be given to fees paid to date, so I mean. Unfortunately, the town manager and the board of selectmen at the time appeared to bless those changes that have taken place. Without any site plan review.
Well, I mean, and and when you look at. When you look at. Um, Pergosian. There's a couple. Documents from Pergosian where he said, I realize I gotta commit to site plan review and he was gonna do it, there was two or three different times. He he was gonna come in and. He didn't.
So I think though that Brian Norton is um. Of the opinion that they are basically just hiring them as caterers. The New Hampshire Restaurant. So really, I don't know, we should. It should be Loon's issue.
It's Loon's issue.
Because they, it's their. So then they hire, you know, like a restaurant group. To do the catering and they wanna make changes. It's it's not like he's renting to them, he's hiring them as a subcontractor.
But it's up to Loon to be able to tell. The subcontractor, this is what you can and can't do. You know, and or or. If you got, if you want to do something more, then you gotta let us know so we can go to the town and see whether we need site plan review or whether we need to make changes or pay more water tap fees. Whatever.
I mean, are they supposed to, the caterers are preparing the food on site?
And you lose, without having site plan review, what it also does is. You lose the history of it. About ten years down the road, you say, well, we've always done that, I don't know what. You did or you didn't, we, I don't know, we didn't do site plan re- review, so we didn't know what you had. You know, I mean, it it it. When Joe finally kicks a buck, we're all gonna lose a lot of history, we're gonna have to be looking, we're gonna have to be looking at the paper and saying, what's here, you know?
Jake's role is gonna be here for another thirty years, at least.
Look, I'm just saying, but things like this are are helpful to have, you know, the site plan review so that. Ten fifteen years, there's a lot of changes being made over there, you know, and and when a, when a. A new ski lodge goes in, instead of that tent, I'm assuming they're gonna put something there. You're gonna wanna know what they had for points for water and sewer to, because they're gonna wanna take points off of. Whatever they're gonna put in their new place, you know, so to have a site plan review now really makes. Kind of helps that go. That documentation as well, so it it just helps to document all, and it's not a slap on hand, it's not anything, it just says. Here's what we're doing, here's the changes we made, do we owe you any more money, is this okay? And then you just. You know, you.
But again, what triggers site plan review, it's change from one use to another.
Five hundred square feet or more.
Five hundred square feet of previous surface. Expansion of existing use.
So the deck would have done that.
Well, it is an expansion of existing use by the fact that. The bars and the dance, I mean, the 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 band, to me that. And and the water tap things, if if those have all changed. To me, that changes the whole scope of what kind of sorting was there.
Technically, do they need a permit to add the deck even?
Well, that's it, the deck is probably over five hundred square feet.
Yeah, they need a land use permit to do that.
And I don't know if anyone's asked, do you have a permit for putting that deck on? Maybe Loon has one.
They might have one that we just.
I don't, I mean, we've got all stuff in the town and and do you have something that shows you paid? Pay more water tap fees when you put these, that kitchen down in the lower part, you know? I think they just did what normal people would do is that they expanded, the business levels got bigger and, but. And then, oh. Mister Pergosian came in and he changed the thing with Cisco. And he bought, he bought the property and Loon maintained them, still maintains the the test structure, but. I'm sure when a tent structure goes away, it's all gonna be Mark Pergosian's. You know, he's probably gonna build that whole thing. But you're gonna wanna know.
On the deck, they did come with a planning board on it one time.
See, we can't find.
I must say that we, it's in the records. But I remember they did come in for an outside deck around that property, front people, which would be better than that, but he wasn't on the board that time.
If it's not in the thing.
Not on paper, I didn't say, I didn't deny that. A lot of stuff. Get put in and approved it without even going on paper, I can show you lots of the paper. That's been admitted and admitted, admitted to plenty more and of this segment. Over the years, haven't been added into it, so we don't have a record of it. Now we have it on tape, we have.
But that's why, you know, but. But that's why you go back to site plan and review and say, look. You gotta come back in and we're gonna straighten this thing out and it's all gonna be what you have and then we're gonna go forward, whether it's Loon Mountain. Whether it's a hotel across the street or the restaurant or whatever, so you. It it's not, you're not finding them, you're just saying this is what we, this is that we know what you had, this is what we. You know, I mean, and and if you don't wanna charge them for something, that's fine, I. I just want something that says, here's what you got now. We know what's there. And and here's what you're using it for, so that if things change in the five or ten years down the road, you have a document that says. This is what we agree, board agreed, and I, to me, that's that's important. I've been doing all talking, OJ, I know you gotta say something.
Does anyone else have any other thoughts? Do we need to move further here?
Sure, I'll get my own, but. I think I've been perceived with this, the approach should be to to ask them questions. Question one, how many seats do you have? It's a hundred and seventy six or less, that's not a change. And I don't care if it's a bar seat or a restaurant seat, again, our ordinance of the. Number two. Do you have a kitchen downstairs? And is it a cooking kitchen or is it a warming kitchen? What do you do down in that? What does it consist of? Okay?
So we take a look at with this. They took a look.
With that.
Here, what you have here, what you have now.
But again, with that and within the aspect of cooking, because it was presented as a warming kitchen, which which. Again, from from the lodge, looking back in the upstairs kitchen, I can see warming items, I can see a warming oven. Warming pots, warming stuff. So so ask them what's in the downstairs kitchen. And then the third question I can think of is, is ask them when the deck was built. And if that was part of the, was that part of the original construction or was that added on later? And if so, was there any permitting related to that? Those are the three questions that I can think of, but, I mean. The approach, the approach we should take is asking them, not. I'm just saying, you should ask them questions and then.
But I would also ask about. What do you, so let me ask you, what do you think about? It was a. It was a cafeteria, for lack of a better word, it was a cafeteria. It served skier food. And it was for the skiers that came down the ski. The change from being a cafeteria. To a having two bars and a, a stage. To me, makes a big change. If someone came in and did that to a, to us. A small coffee shop that was here on Main Street, we might say that's quite a change. I'm gonna ask you, what do you, what do you guys think? I mean, if you had a small coffee shop on Main Street. And they said. We're serving bagels and coffee. But now all of a sudden they take that all out and they put in nothing but bars and they and they got a guy in there playing a guitar. An electric guitar, I don't care what you call it. You you see what I'm saying? Does that, does that make a difference or not?
I mean, we don't control what anyone has menu, I think if we said, Mr. Coffee Shop, you're approved, your hours of operation is six AM to two PM. And that's a condition of approval, and then they do that and well, now they're open from. Six AM to midnight, then that would. No, no restrictions on any hours of operation.
But you can't find anything that says it was approved either, as what it was. So you really, you don't have anything to, maybe Loon has something like that, I don't know, maybe they have something.
I think it was approved a- as a ski lodge, base lodge. And and, okay, so then menu has changed.
I'm not worried about the menu.
Well, you're implying that it does.
No, 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 the only I'm saying is that.
It used to be brown bag lunches and now they're serving all kinds of food and alcohol. It's still a ski lodge, base lodge. And I think you could do the same thing with the, with the uh, octagon lodge, I mean, that that used to be. Um, the the downstairs, that used to be brown bag lunches and upstairs used to be cafeteria. And then they they expanded and and they've been bringing in vans and stuff like that, I mean. It's it's morphed with with the times. I, again, that predated land use permitting, that was back in the sixties, started.
When?
What?
Oh, we never had playbook for that time.
Got in the sixties when they built the octagon lodge.
Remember that.
There was no permitting, they just built it. A- a- and again, I think there's changes like that that have gone on in that business and in every other business.
I just wanna make sure that, you know, that's.
What's that?
I like your idea of asking the questions and then let them come present.
Yeah, I mean, is there any other questions you wanna ask? Again, mine is the number of seats. The downstairs kitchen, what does it consist of and? Yeah, and the and the duck.
And obviously using paper plates, because that was the basis for their um, water and sewer tap fee reduction. Seats added to the deck. All that goes with number of seats.
With the, yeah, the number of seats.
I think Ryan did check the number of seats when he inspected it after we gave him a permit to have the sinks. And I think the number of seats was less than one seventy six.
It's about a hundred and fifty, I think.
Yeah, I I don't think that's even close. That's my guess, so I don't think it's an issue, but we can ask them the questions.
Yeah, I think it's probably a hundred and fifty, when I, when I looked at it on your plan. What they got, they have twenty four bar seats, they have, they have a cash bar, which is. If I look at the length of it, you might get ten seats out of that, then they've got the picnic tables, there's. Eight of those that have, that are six foot long, eight or ten of those that have six foot long and they have some round tops. You might fit four chairs at a round top maybe, so that's what I assumed. So when I added them all up, it came out to like a hundred and fifty, so.
What would be included, the sitting outside?
The sitting outside is, is a change, if.
It's more than five hundred feet they have to.
Right.
They have to come in.
How to commit to complete new set plan review process? So so many ambiguity going in this whole thing, password, so forth. When they make you commit to a whole new different site plan, what they made, what they wanted to put into it, they were having a record. They haven't tried to get, but they did have, didn't have, we don't have records of.
You know, I I appreciate that, Joe, we could make that argument for a lot of properties, we're not just gonna stop dragging people in at random.
I think we should ask the questions and let them come forward and go there.
Because they are gonna expand that eventually.
Right, okay, and then they'll need to come into site plan review.
You just need to catch up with what they're doing.
As over years, a lot of stuff's been. You have to put through cracks, like the breakaway gate, you had to make a free inspection, that was then put in. You have to put through cracks, like the breakaway gate, you had to make a free section, that was then put in.
Right, but, but look at the governor's lodge. Again, I don't know, that went through site plan review, I believe that pre- predated.
What was that? No, it went in.
The governor's lodge?
It went.
Okay, there's been changes in this since the beginning. I mean, they rearranged the, the retail downstairs and the, uh.
Well, the retail, yeah, the retail, the retail stuff, they used to have a rental shop downstairs.
Shop downstairs, that's gone. Um, anyway, there's, there was.
The bar and the stuff has always stayed the same. They took out the amphitheater.
Yeah. But that's gonna all come in for site plan review.
I guess we gotta ask those, you know, maybe bringing us out is. What? It is our. Is our determination for what, uh, what? Significantly may take change of use. Should it be modified so that when people make those changes, you know? Because the, the, the only reason I ask that question is. If the, if the, the general public or in a butter says. Joe Schmo now has a, has a band over there and I can hear. Well, that doesn't require a site plan review because it's only, you know, they can start putting in loud music on Main Street and guess what?
Police matter.
Well, yeah, but, but they're gonna say, do you have approval of a band? Don't need it.
Well.
You know, so here you go.
You do get an entertainment permit from the police chief, where you have entertainment in a restaurant.
You don't need that here. In town, you can put as loud a music as you want, is what you're saying, is what you're saying. I mean. I can remember when, uh, Steve knows what, uh, Jane. Remember they were gonna put something down here? And it was outside at the gazebo. But she didn't, she had a fit over that, she had people, I mean, those people had a fit over that. And the mech was a Mexican restaurant, gonna have that entertainment with twelve staff too. Cause that, that was an issue at one, yeah, he was gonna have, and then there was, like I said, there was. Yeah.
Yeah, but I think he came in, when he, when he was converting the, um. He converted a mill house into a restaurant slash apartment.
Right, but he, but, but then later on he came in, he wanted music and we shut him down. And then up there at the, up there, yeah, we did. And then up there at the, he did come in, the gang, the gang motel, same thing. Both, those two, he did come in for those, I'm telling. Look.
Maybe if they did, it's just not what the ordinance says.
Hey, respect about that, all I'm saying is. Do we, you know? Are we concerned about the butters or not? Cause if, if someone. Can just put in a band and start playing. Or put in a bar and change coffee shop to a bar without coming in. Then I guess.
I guess if that's a concern, we need to update the ordinance.
Yeah, because it's just rest. It doesn't, there's no separate category for bar.
They're only still used to the restaurant.
I mean, it's a lot of, I mean, this other place over here, just, we just gave, uh, the ice cream, it's an ice cream, Chinese ice cream, whatever it is over here.
Oh, the bow, bow.
Bow, yeah, whatever that is, so, so if they took that up and just started having a band and, a band in there and all of a sudden, Dennis' place over here didn't like it, I mean.
Yeah, but that'd be like a music shop.
I mean, I'm just saying, I, I, I thought those were the kind of changes that affected neighborhoods and stuff that you wanted.
They've been seeing, putting a definition of ski lodge. In our ordinance as opposed to a restaurant.
Maybe something like that, something that says it can include music or it can. Because I think the things that you'll see will be things like that, music would bother somebody, you know, might, might be able to bother in a butter. I don't know, uh, anything else that might have bothered in the butter besides you get a bar.
You break up the types of restaurants, coffee shop, fast food. By dining. It, uh, it, I mean, it gets convoluted if you keep adding stuff to the ordinance.
I'm not looking for that, Jim, all I'm looking for is.
I understand that, I understand your concerns.
For a butter, for a butters to have an ability to come in and say. I don't want, I've, I've got young kids in my house, I don't want. Loud music, you know, that, so they have a, they have a form to which they could come in and say. It's bothering me and you can say, well. Added, you added, you, you added a ten piece rock band, it's waking up my kids and, and these kids in this house.
Plus, if you allow music in the ordinance, you can't just. Deny the, deny the application because someone says I don't want it there either.
I don't know.
Right, I mean, it's kinda subjective, but I don't like the music, well, okay, well, we're not gonna give approval.
Well, we do, we, we kinda sorta do that a little bit now with the, uh, short term rentals when the. People are outside or cars are parking.
Well, I mean.
On lawns or, you know, it, it's same type of.
Voice complaints verified by the local police, it's not just a neighbor saying, who is he?
I mean, we don't have any, I mean, we, we do have market space requirements, but. There's nothing that says it can't be on the lawn. And people park cars for short term and then the people get all irritated because of that. They're outside raising. Dan or having a good time, whatever you wanna call it.
Haven't looked at the short term rental ordinance, but I think it does address. Those concerns.
We're getting way off track. Sorry, we're, so we're getting way off track. From this, the short term rentals.
I'm just looking at given, you know, at, at what point is, is it a change of use?
Yeah, I mean, I think they might, it. It looks like they've done some things, need to come into site plan review, I have, I have to agree, agree with you there, but I don't think it's. Anything, I don't think the list of violations is that extensive.
I'm not saying they're violations. I'm just calling, I will call it, I will call it an update of, of, of the. An update of. Change of use. That's all.
What do we do to move forward to like?
So, does anyone have any other questions besides the three? Do you want to have any other questions?
Oh. Uh.
I got the, the four paper plates is added, oh yeah, I'm sorry, it was four and a half.
So the plates, the kitchen.
So you got the water and sewer. As far as the. Bars and kitchens.
Well, I'm just doing a number of seats. Kitchen, deck, paper plates.
Sounds good.
And if you could ask them, just like. We've asked Longfellow or stuff about, um, if, if they have. Any, uh. Documents that show. Approvals of. The deck or the building or what, you know, what it was so that we could. You know, maybe they have stuff and we, then at least we could, we could look at it and say. Yeah, they have this, so they're, they're off, everything's okay.
Yeah, that's what they can clarify.
But we don't have it, as far as I know.
I didn't find it when I was looking for permits.
Other than that, that's, I think, I'll find with that.
I'm thinking of graph that letter, Carol.
Um, probably won't be until Monday, because I am.
Grabbed it, give them thirty days to respond, so, fine with everybody.
Yeah?
Yes.
Cause you're not gonna have, you're not gonna have the information.
I'll send you an email with. Four questions.
There's plenty of time, I, 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 I think, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'm.
Between now and next winter is all I'm saying, if, if there is one, if you try to give them time for the judge, that's all I'm saying. Try and give them time to adapt to it. Move on, that's all.
All right, is there any other business?
There is a. Public hearing in this room tomorrow night at. Six o'clock.
I'll call for that.
Um. The. Uh, Forest Service is coming here to talk about plans. For, they're calling it the Lost River Project, but that, it includes. Up on the height of land, on the move one fault, but, but going northward into the town of Lincoln. It sort of affects some of our land, and it's just, uh, 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 I can't say just. It's a resource, um. Management study. Of that area.
Have, have you read all?
This isn't related to, it's just the for- of forest. Management.
Plan, it's their, their future plan, but have you, did you read all of different aspects of that that they have and go into all? Different documents, you, did you realize that? Loon's gonna put up a, they're, they're gonna have a, a slide. Coming down Kissin Cousins, supposed to be built twenty twenty-three. Forest Service, Forest Service is already looking at it with Lou.
They didn't keep a plain, plain view on it.
I know, the Forest Service is looking at, they probably, Lou doesn't have to commit, they're, they're ready to, but I'm just saying, there's a whole bunch of things in it, and one of the things I thought about. The, the question that I wanna ask is. Over their plan, are they gonna do anything with the parking on Route one twelve? On the can, cause of all the, you know, when, all the overflow that happens and it gets out onto the can. They should be looking at, someone should be asking about, hey, look. You were inviting all these people up there, but when they get here, they got no place to park at all these. Hiking in places, so are you gonna, are you gonna address that in this part of the thing? So to me, that's one of the things that I would ask about that, you know?
That's a good question, because it's, the can is a great example of it, but you were triple I road.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, I mean, and not just the camping years, but, but, you know, I, I forget what was the, the trail up, I think it was Osceola, might have been to Combs, but. Like, you get there at seven in the morning, there's no parking.
Yeah, it's like most of the campgrounds on the can, too, not the campgrounds, but the, uh. Park along the road everywhere.
Everywhere.
Big Rock Campground, I was up there. It's like, I think, like an, an arena, but, uh, they're closed. The gates crossed, this is Memorial Day weekend. Big Rock Campground is closed, the gate's closed across there. I said, that's kinda weird, isn't it? I mean, Memorial Day, you would think they would be open, but.
Maybe they don't have any staff.
I don't know, the, the one down below before Ford Bridge, that one i- is open. But Big Rock Campground above that. Is closed, the gates crossed, it pins in, I went, wow.
Will tennis be muted?
I was just gonna look that up.
But the parking thing would be really, you know. For the town, I would think, and, and six, six o'clock. Yeah, a- and, and I don't know if, if it could be. The question could be expanded to up on the, you know, the, uh, going through the north.
Straight bar, not the.
Not the jurisdiction, that's right.
I mean.
All their parking trails are.
I would think so.
All their trailheads must be.
Right, cause National Forest is the Forest Service, so that'd be.
Same thing, yeah, same thing at Ford Bridge.
I know if it's in the management study area that they're looking at. I don't think Lou is either. But.
Well, when you look at, when you look at some of their doc- the documentation of, they show you the projects and they wanna know. You know, there's all sorts of different projects, there's a project listing in there too, cause I was. Browsing through, it's, it's got, there's a ton of information in there about. What they're doing, um, it actually lists. All of the square footage. On the, I don't know, it sounds like I'm picking on a little bit, it was. All the square footage that was disturbed when they made the bike trail system. So I was like, wow, that's a lot of disturbed. Square footage. But then I thought, well, if it's on National Forest Service property, that, that doesn't, that shouldn't affect anything. But if it was on, whatever they disturbed on private property. Comes underneath the stormwater protection. You know, so, but we never heard about any of that, so. And I, and then they're looking.
Piece of their application for those trails, but there's no permit that we issued for any of them.
But we, we, we don't issue, I, I don't think the town has any. Any.
We don't have.
Possibility on the National Forest property, but anything that's private. I mean, when you take a look like a, a wetlands permit. A wetlands permit, well, not a wetlands, but a alteration of terrain permit. Will tell you that the permit does not mean that they don't have to comply with other town regulations. So we were talking, when I was talking to Ray about whether alteration of terrain was different than the stormwater protection for the town. It doesn't matter, the stormwater, and if it deals with private property. You still have to have the stormwater. Water protection from the town. As far as I see, for disturbances, but once you get up to, from the Forest Service line or up above it's. That's just. They take care of it, Forest Service takes care of it.
Do you know if they're gonna give an update on the water tank?
No. No, I know that they're not going to give an update on the water.
And we gotta wait, there's that.
What?
They probably write a letter to the center, they get expediated. Expedited.
Uh, they, they are, they've taken that step. The, um, original plan was for the town to hire. Its own. Specialists in certain fields to do the research work. And then the Forest Service just has to. Uh, review it, and that was, that was. Thought to be the, the faster process that they, then they just review it rather than actually go out and do the work. Um, the Forest Service, it came back, uh, just recently.
I saw.
And, and said that, that. They would have time. Um. Right off to do that research part, so rather than taking a two-step process of hiring someone. And then waiting for their review, that they would just go out and do it, start on it, as, you know, as soon as they, they can. And, um. So we're moving forward with that, they expect to have everything done. Um. You know, by the. I don't say the end of summer, but, but.
Ooh, but that long, huh?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we were thinking this is gonna be. Eight to ten months and it might only be five or six, so, so.
Really?
So it, it, it's a few months. Yeah, and if we can get that done by the end, it's. Uh, by the end of the building season, then we can move forward with the engineering and permitting of it. Throughout the winter and after start construction, hopefully. In April.
So. Has the Forest Service said? They're willing to. Give that property or they're not saying. That they can use that property until they do all their studies, they won't say, they won't commit to.
They were going forward with all of their. Time and resources. To investigate something that they didn't think had a good chance of success. On the, on the other side. Now, they might find something that's a showstopper. But what's more likely is they're gonna find something that says, oh, we need to mitigate this, change that or move this or, or. Do something else, okay, but it, it's, again, not a hundred percent, but. Less likely that they're gonna find something that says, no, you can't build a tank.
I'll be so glad when that tank gets done, because then. A lot of the South Peak stuff is, is answered. You know, I mean, things are, it's so much easier, but until you really get that. The question is there as to whether or not. It's gonna really, really, really happen, you know, because you know what it smells like, some bat, some bug, some, you know?
But, but. You know, it, if, if they come forward and say, nope, you absolutely can't do this, there's no place up there that's gonna work, no. South Peak is, they can build their tank on their land without Forest Service. And could probably do that fairly quickly. And solve their immediate problem, but it won't solve is.
The towns.
The landing in that side, it won't solve, the village in that side, it won't solve.
So.
The backup to the downtown, you know, drastic fire.
So when you look at the Forest Service information on that web plate. You will find that they are calling the tank. The Loon Village Tank.
The one over here?
The one you're gonna put up, the new one. No, sir. The one that's gonna go up to South Peak, they call that the Loon Village Tank. I looked at it, said, where the hell's this tank? So I started reading it, I said. It's gonna be serving the Loon Village, it's gonna be serving hoping downtown, but you should look at that.
They may not know that we have a Loon Village Tank and it's at the village of Loon.
Right.
Um, well, that's what I was thinking, maybe, maybe it's gonna do, but they were saying that. It, it was due to not having proper. Pressure all over and, and that, that bank is gonna help that. The new bank was gonna help that, and that's why they were calling it, they identified it as the Loon Village Tank. I went.
Well, there is a way to expedite it, really fast. Well, there is a way to expedite this really fast. They've done before. By piece of land. Like the South Forest Ridge, that five hundred acres, belong to the town. Drop back for water, that land for the water, the mountain tank, they won't drop land for land, with with their domain, I don't know if you knew that or not. Sox have done it, they own the land above, going up on the uphill side.
And where do we build the tank?
Tank to go there, so the land of the tank here.
Take it out of the forest, yeah.
I mean, I think that's huge. You're up there.
I think that's huge, but we're here.
My thought was they should, should have put it up, the deck should went up there, but the landing, that's the highest elevation that you have. Landing's higher than everything, but I I don't think that, I don't, I know, Joe, I know the developer, but I don't think he would give up sight to do that, but. That's the highest piece of property there is. Um, cuz it was part, that's why originally when they were looking at all of the things that was considered, I said, guys, look at that, cuz. What's that?
Is it closer to three?
It's it's higher, it's higher than anything that you have. Over everything across the village and everything.
Oil, Tanner?
Someone did decide they looked at that.
Study, and they they basically drew a red line or a red swath. And said, this is where the tank could go, and they basically did it all the way up to Indian Head, I mean, you know, and um. And the landing was was a, it offered, but but then you get it, okay, now you need, you know. To run from the landing down to Loon Mountain.
I remember there was something about pumps in there too, but it was.
We are getting off subject again.
So, anything else?
Motioned, uh adjourned.
Second, all in favor? Carol, you good with that?
Hang on, don't shut down.
Love and want to identify themselves?
iPhone one one, are you there?